So on behalf of the town, we want to thank you for meeting with us. We've been so happy with representation from your office and really feel like you have our backs and are supporting Newcastle. So we really appreciate you coming in today.
Well, you're very welcome. And you know, for those who don't know, I was the supervisor for the town of Bedford for seven years before going into the assembly. So I think I come with a pretty acute sensitivity and knowledge of how important it is for our local governments to have a really good partnership with their representatives at every level of government. And you know, to your point Lisa, I just think it's so important for me to have the back of every one of my town governments that I represent. And I feel very fortunate that I can have really good partners in the municipalities that I represent. We work together very closely. And you know, I'll give you an example of something that we worked on in which I had to kind of battle some of my friends in the legislature to tell you the truth. And that was, you know, concerns about the accessory dwelling unit. Proposal that, you know, was gaining a lot of traction in the, it was in the budget. And while at the local level, from my experience at the town of Bedford, I, we had an accessory dwelling unit law and it's something that, you know, it's a great tool, but I didn't feel that it was appropriate to mandate it for every municipality, particularly the way it was started. But know that I will continue to do that. I will continue to advocate, even if it means that I may be taking some unpopular stances vis a vis some of my colleagues. I try to always maintain a good relationship with them, don't misunderstand, but that's my job. And you know, I'm really glad that we're having this meeting because now is the time, now that we have legislative session over with, in which I can really focus in on critical needs of each of my municipalities. I'm going to be having these meetings with the leadership, you know, the supervisors or mayors and staff for every one of the municipalities that I represent. And from that, we take basically a to-do list, a checklist of what we're going to at least try to be able to get done. Recognizing that we're not going to get all of it done, but at least to try to do what we can to move ahead either with such as with the agencies or with grant applications or with legislation. All of that is what we then will be taking back with us and going forward with that and keeping in touch on a regular basis in terms of status updates on how we're doing on that. And I want to thank you folks for doing such a good job, Jill especially. I know that you, I see your hand behind this. And you know, with the project updates and with the agenda, it is extremely helpful to have this.
Yeah, this is my outstanding staff. With all respect, it is my outstanding staff.
Well, I tell you, your outstanding staff did an outstanding job and it really is extremely helpful to us. Now, some of this we just got in, so I will certainly address what I can at this point. But then a good deal of this, we're going to have to delve into in order to get back to you.
Of course, of course.
One of the things that I should mention, just globally on what we're doing with DOT. I guess it was about two months ago that we sat down with the regional director Lance McMillan of the DOT at his offices with staff at his, and that was really to discuss not so much safety concerns, but road deterioration issues. We, there were some safety issues, but it was primarily road deterioration issues. From that, and this was actually of Lance's suggestion or Lisa's willingness to have us proceed with it. You know, we said, look, we want to talk to each of our municipalities and compile from them what they perceive as the worst situations. And actually, as you may recall, what I asked each of them to do was to tell us the problems that you have and rank them in order of severity, okay, which everybody did. And then Heather, bless her soul, put together the compilation to make it in some comprehensible format for the regional office. We have sent that on and that went on, I don't know, maybe three, four weeks ago, we got a reply from their folks. And now we're in the process of saying, okay, this is our ask, this is what they said they're doing. And what is it that is not getting done, or at least we don't know what the schedule is for getting done. And so just big picture, that's where we are in terms of state roads. If you were to, on the flip side of my business card, you'll see the nine municipalities that I represent. It is by far the largest assembly district geographically in Leuschner County. And so I've got a lot of state roads.
Yeah.
And what they do then is they told us that they will do a condition assessment of the state roads on an annual basis. Because roads deteriorate at a different rate, you know, depending upon just what has occurred in terms of the climate at, over the previous year. And also, you know, some roads get a whole lot more use than others. And so it's from that starting point that they make their determinations as to what they're going to focus on. Now.
Chris, let me just a quick question. Chris, quick question. Do they confer with someone like Bart? You know, who would know about the state roads in our municipalities, or do they do this on their own without, you know, following up with the whole?
They're going to do the condition assessment internally, but that does not mean that they operate in a vacuum, okay? And I'll give you an example of that. Is that we had a state road in one of the municipalities I represent north of here. And they were getting pummeled, partly at our instigation, I might add, with geez, you know, this road really is bad and you can't just do potholes. You're going to have to repave. We don't know what's going to happen with that, other than they did agree that they would go back to take a look. And so part of what we want to do is take a look at the comparison that I just mentioned to you in terms of what we're hearing from municipalities, what they came back to us with, and what is if it's not being addressed.
And Jeremy, we gave them a list of, you know, our most in need of repair roads that are DOT state roads.
And I think that you guys compiled based on your folks at DPW, right?
Right, yes. We went around and looked at the whole lack of all the state roads within the Capitol.
Which is, exactly, which is, and I have to say that every one of the municipalities handled that. You know, to say, okay, what do you think? You guys are on the roads on a daily basis, what do you find? Because we found that to be the most reliable and also the most credible when it comes to going back to DOT to say, hey gee, you know, I had a conversation with the DPW head in Newcastle and here's why they put X, Y, Z so high on the list, if that's something that is not being addressed. Now, there is, if you're talking about major, major improvements, and by the way, repaving is a major improvement. Then there is some schedule that goes through committees and such. And sometimes we do our best to, or we find that we have to do an end run on that. Because it is, I personally feel, rather tortured process and takes forever to get things done. And in order to make any kind of headway. And I talked to other very frustrated council members who said, I can't tell you how many of those nymtik meetings I've been to. And you know, they didn't feel that, let's just say they didn't feel they had a voice. So my job is to try to bring things to the top that we feel really need for. And you know, I can assure you that that is something that I will be doing. I just wanted to mention that when we were talking about DOT. Now with that, I'm happy to dive into the agenda and to dive into the specific items here. Does that make sense, or?
Yes.
Yes, no.
That okay? Does that work?
DOT is our first topic, so.
Good.
Perfect, perfect segue.
Now, so these are, what you have here are things that you would like to, these are, I take it, that's safety or safety slash engineering issues, right? In, under the bullet points.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Well, you know, honestly.
Not the chapline maybe, but.
No?
There's two, there's two safety issues, numbers two and three under the New York State DOT.
Yeah.
You know, the Whipper Will blind curve, I don't know Jeremy, if you want to speak to that. And then Bart, the flooding on Route 100. Those are really the two immediate safety issues. The rest are studies, pedestrian sidewalks, projects that we'd like to see implemented on state roadways. And you know, so it's kind of a mix of two. So I think numbers two and three are more immediate because they're health and safety. The other items, number one, the pedestrian connection in Millwood, that is, we just were part of a complete street study. And you know.
Iris was part, Iris was present.
Yep.
Yes, right. And so we really want to carry that forward, you know, creating a connection. And unfortunately, between that and the chapline, it involves state roadways. And we need the state to be a willing partner with the town to help us implement these projects.
So. Okay.
That too.
That's always the next question, right? Who's petting? And so do you see these as a shared cost situation, or are you saying DOT, this is a safety issue, fix it?
For the safety issues, DOT, this is a safety issue, fix it.
That's what I, you know, that was always the approach that I took at Bedford.
Yes, yeah, it's not our roadway.
And you know, usually.
The chapline, it's not that, it's not a safety issue.
We'd like them to partner with us, be flexible with us.
Yeah.
And help us, but not completely theirs.
So in, so let's take, let's look first at the safety issues, if you mind.
So the first one to talk about really would be the blind curve on Route 117 here, Whipper Will Road. I'll let Jeremy talk down in a second, but there is, and we've been looking at this for years. There really is a blind curve off of 117, which is a state road going onto Whipper Will Road, which is a highly used road in our town. So there are cars that are often stopped to make a left turn there. And I'll let Jeremy talk to it more, but it's a very dangerous intersection because if cars are stopped and then cars are going quickly on 117, you can't see that a car is stopped until you're on top of a car. So Jeremy, you want to talk to that?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I think, I think everyone in the room is familiar with it, whether you're on the town board for the past few years or working for the town or not, that it's just a dangerous spot. And with the 90 townhomes coming online and the eventual development of the chap pack into something bigger and the filling out of the retail space, you're only going to have more people there. And Chris, you know, our high school is just right around the corner and you have new drivers and kids on the road. And I called you, Chris, and shared with you the other day, someone almost struck my wife who was standing making a left with her blinker on. And they crashed into the back entrance, the wall, the back entrance to the school. Airbags off, had to be towed away, you know, thankfully the person swerved in time, but it could cause some significant, you know, injuries, if not worse. I've asked, years ago, I asked our former chief to give a list of the accidents along the whole stretch of 117. Chief Carroll is in the process of pulling from Annandale to Upland for us to share with you. But Summit Greenfield had, or now Summit, had made a handshake promise. And in their defense, they can only do so much because to access it, you need state permission from the road or from the school coming, school property down to 117. But it's not a matter of deforesting, if you will, the trees to give a clearer view. This has to be shaved and pushed back. So you've probably driven up a, take a gander, there's other curves too. But this is a, it's a catastrophe waiting to happen. And you know, Jill and Lisa could attest to, this is something that I brought up and we've all shared concerns over the years. But something has to be done, Chris.
So here's what my experience has been in dealing with DOT on safety issues. They're going to look at data.
And I'll just interrupt on that point, Chris. My neighbor had an accident there. She didn't report it to the police. So data is important, but you have to realize it's more than just data.
Yeah, and that is an issue.
Because if you don't have to be told, you need to report it necessarily, since people don't.
That's the thing, there's, there's a lot of close calls there that are, you're not going to see data on those. And I know DOT likes to have data, but when people are saying over and over again that there's a real issue, there's a lot of close calls.
We have to get a light, not a process in order to put it on.
Yeah. And we've done everything we can do from our end.
And you don't necessarily have to have data. Okay. If you do, if the police department has got data, it's free. If you don't, that's okay too. It still should be brought to their attention. As similar situation that I had in Bedford is they actually asked, let me back up. Studies cost money, okay? Some studies can cost literally millions. So much that, you know, for example, Pete Harcom put in legislation to have a study run on both Route 22 and Route 35. Well, that's millions. And so the legislation cannot go forward. There's no money in the question. Other studies may still cost, that they'll hire a consulting engineer rather than doing it internally. In the case of something that we're looking at 172 in Bedford, what Lance told me to do is have the town board adopt a resolution asking DOT to look at it. Now, what I also have found with DOT, and this is, I'm sure you know Kevin Wynn. And Kevin Wynn taught me this, don't tell them how to fix the problem. Tell them there's a problem, fix it. Because then it's up to them to say, okay, you need a light. Or okay, you know, maybe they're going to sign it. And even though we may feel that that's inadequate, then let's say, okay, that's what we're going to get. And then if it doesn't work, we're going to come back to them in a year or whatever. But in the case, the other thing that they would say, by the way, because I get this frequently, well, this is not an engineering issue. This is an enforcement issue. You need to say that.
That's not, that's not sure though.
No, 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 I'm not saying.
Just giving an example.
I'm just giving you an example of what they might come back with, because I got that with another road, not these.
Understood.
But one of the things that I tried to do is to try to say, gee, you know, we've had enforcement there, if it's true. And we honestly think that this is something that we're asked to look at and evaluate from an engineering standpoint. And it appears to me that both of these are engineering issues, okay? And that's something that, you know, you want to talk internally about that, but just my eyeballing it, that these are engineering issues. And that's something that informs how you're going to write your resolution. It has more home. I can see why they're doing it that way. You know, some stuff, I'll do, you know, when I was supervisor, I'd just send them an email. But something that rises to a higher level, then I would have my town board do it. And so, because it's a bigger ask, you know what I mean? So that, that's what I would suggest for two and three. Is to, is to do a resolution on that, discussing it internally in terms of how you want to approach it. You know, for example, you folks had talked to, on the flooding stuff, you said this has been going on for years. Now, I, and so that's something that you need to mention, is that this has been a long-term problem. This is something that is not occurring once every eight years, but it's, you know, if such is the case, in other words, if the flooding is once every three years, that's one thing. But if it's something that happens with great frequency, that's something maybe you want to mention.
I just one question, Chris, I'm not, I'm not from before you leave that topic of advising the DOT and doing a resolution, then I'll pipe down. Would it be beneficial, do you think, if our council is willing to do so, to write a letter about notice and liability? Because I don't believe the town would have any liability, God forbid there's an accident. But it's because it's the state who cuts the trees and the grass, it's the state who knows about the curb. They would be liable, God forbid, it's been an ongoing issue that they have had notice about and it led to some sort of horrible injury. Does it behoove us to have council to write?
Well, I have to tell you, the adoption of the resolution puts them on notice.
We could add potentially some liability language in the resolution.
And you don't even need to.
Okay.
As a matter of law, you have created liability by saying, this is a safety issue. I mean, again, if you've got some data, that's really helpful to back it up. But if you don't, and you say, you know, based on conversations with our police chief, there have been numerous instances and we know that there have been many instances that had not been reported. You put that in your resolution, you never put them on notice.
I'll have a report at the beginning of, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll have a report at the beginning of the weeks, next week with all the accidents on 117 I'll forward to the group.
No, I think that will be really helpful. Because that will, I have found, you know, I had in one of, and this was not the municipality, this was the homeowners association, they were suing DOT and I said, folks, you're not going to get anything done doing this with them. And I managed to get them to back off and now I think we're going to actually, a year later, be able to get some, something moving forward where they're not going to get everything they want from DOT, but they will get something from DOT. I am really careful not to be confrontational with them. Assertive, absolutely, very assertive, but not confrontational. I'm really careful about doing that. And everything takes much longer than I would want. They don't give everything that I want, but I have found that, you know, that would just be my advice, that I think that you'll get, you'll get better results.
Okay.
And they won't say, oh, God, Newcastle. You know, you don't want them to do that. You know, you want them to say, this is legit, you know, they're not, you know. That, that's just my sense of it. That's, again, these are policy decisions for you guys to make. And, but that, that's just been my experience in working with them, so.
No, Jill, let's put this on the agenda for the next couple of meetings to talk about.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and we will, we'll copy the Assemblyman and also our state senator on it as well, just so that everybody's, you know, aware of what we've asked for. Doesn't hurt.
If it's helpful, and I don't have to, but if it's helpful, I'm happy to take a look at your draft resolution.
Happy to do it.
But, you know, so happy to do that. One, tell me more about, tell me more about the pedestrian connection. Has this been, has this been priced out?
Some of those expensive studies.
Is this bigger than a breadbox, or?
Well, one thing that this will do is Millwood doesn't have great walkability and it goes along 133 and Route 100 and it's.
Pretty long, how long is that run?
A half, maybe.
A mile and a half.
A mile and a half.
It's a long run.
What this.
It connects an elementary school.
Yeah, what this proposed route would do would be connecting really our West Orchard Elementary School to Getney Park and then to the rest of Millwood.
And the North County Trail.
And the North County Trail.
And the North County Trail.
And there's an opportunity to do it in phases as well. You know, when we did the complete street study, it did look at it in different phases. And it's just a matter of getting that connection, but unfortunately, there's some really narrow areas of roadway and roadway shoulder. And we have these specific requirements in regards to sidewalks with the ADA accessibility and the snow shelf that really started pinging upon private property. There's not enough room. And so, you know, part of it is we are looking for funding for it, but we'd also like to have, you know, a realistic conversation with DOT regarding requirements.
And maybe in some of those, there, look, there are areas that are wider and there are ways we can structure the sidewalk potentially, so it goes through the park a little bit, that can be wider. But in the areas that are very narrow, it would be great to have some relief from that requirement so that, you know, we can put a snow shelf in other areas that are wider, but in those very narrow areas to not necessitate all of that width, because we just can't fit it.
There are homes, yeah.
There are homes and.
Well, yeah, it's private, yeah.
You have a road with trucks, it's a big truck route, so it's, it's, there's a lot.
So you dealt with DOT and their requirements?
A little bit, mostly Bob's field there.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we're familiar with them.
They're super flexible.
When we were designing our sewer project, phase one, we did everything that we could to avoid DOT. Everything. You know, you want that price tag to go up quickly, have, have something that intersects the DOT. And not because they're bad people, but because it's so frightfully expensive. And so I, the only thing I would suggest in all of this, two things. I'm more than happy to advocate. I just think that it's a really heavy lift in which you're asking them to relax requirements. And it actually goes back to liability, because I've had these conversations with Lance. Because the requirements that they have are based on safety. And so if they relax the requirements, they could be taking on a lot of care. And I can't dismiss that. And particularly since we live in such a litigious society. And that's why I cannot be optimistic that you're going to be able to get them to relax any requirements that have anything to do with safety. You just not can do it. And it's barking up the wrong tree. It might, it might be. I, I think that it's not a wise expenditure of consultancy fees, staff time, or political capital. A wise expenditure of consultancy fees, staff time, or political capital dealing with DOT. They're not going to back off. Um, partnering, uh, how can they help in terms of you're doing something, I think they'll help. You know, like we had, um, situation, the, um. Uh, the 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 rain garden, right, uh, that we had over.
The pollinator plant?
The pollinator garden.
Yeah, that was their suggestion.
And that was their suggestion and that was the local residency. And that's a good example of where, number one, it was something that they had internal staff that could. That could work on it, it was not something that was so time sensitive. And so it worked out great, but they're not going to back off on anything that has to do with safety or violence.
So my. Joe, they were at our complete streets walk, right, with DOT was there, correct?
Yes, no, 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 they they were absolutely there, they're 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 part of this and and we will get a, um, a report from the Complete Streets. That will serve as a basis for our funding applications going forward. There are a couple of things that aren't safety related that DOT has really dug their heels in on and there's no reason for it, at least in my opinion.
So that, I think that's a different matter.
Okay, so that's a requirement.
If it's not a safety related thing.
You would never want a wave safety issue.
Okay, so so this has to do with.
No, I mean, that's something happy to, yeah.
Okay, so their requirement that there be takings instead of easements, so it means that.
I'm sorry, I missed that, Joe, the requirement that.
They require property to be taken.
Instead of easing.
Instead of purchasing a easement over private property.
Right, that's not a safety issue.
Someone would have to sell us their private property.
So if you don't have enough land, yeah.
No, I get it, I get it, I get it.
And previously, they did allow conserve, they did allow easements and then they moved to a a takings only. And so we'd like to go back to allowing take, to allowing the easements.
What's their, what's their, uh, principle upon which they made that change?
I have no idea.
It's not safety related, Joe, so.
No.
In other words, they're not arguing that if we don't own it or you don't own it, then you can't control the.
It's it's an easement.
I do not know what's a legal easement.
No, no, I'm just wondering.
I have no idea.
Don't know, but I have to tell you that that was a real game changer for us.
That that's that's something that I'm happy to explore.
Yeah, I and I think that that would make a huge difference because in order to purchase property is much more.
Oh, sure.
Difficult than you.
It tremendously.
And you have to produce it and.
Exactly.
What a mess.
Yes.
Yeah, not, all of a sudden, we're creating noncompliant, non, zoning, noncompliant parcels, it's 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 a tremendous, tremendous impediment.
Oh, yeah.
One of the, one of the things that.
Although I guess, I guess one one que, one question, Joe, if you if you went the easement route, you're subject to any holdout, right? In other words.
I'm sorry.
But if not every property owner agreed, then the project would serve, right, whereas if you went the taking route.
That that happens to, that happens regardless.
Even in the taking situation.
Yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, it shouldn't be takings, it's a purchase.
It's a purchase.
Yeah, but I'm saying if you exercise eminent domain, there's no, right, you just.
We're, we're, yeah, we we were not doing that.
Gotcha, okay, so this was, this was a purchase, not an eminent domain.
Yeah, I mean.
Correct, yeah. It's purchase versus.
Well, well, that's that's something, so if you get to me, get to us, the Complete Streets report and all of that, that go into that. And and do, Sabrina, you mentioned that this is something that might be able to be done in phases. And do you have an idea of what you want to do first and how much it's going to cost?
Um, I don't think we have that.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we're waiting for the the report.
So, so this is not necessarily a 2022 project?
No.
No.
No, but I will tell you that the the purchase versus or purchase versus easement is an issue that we have whenever we want to do something on a state route. Right, so it so it does extend beyond this project.
And you say this is a new policy or a relative?
No, it's relatively new, you know, yeah, how long, Joe, would you say?
Ten years, but how long ago did we put the, uh, 120 sidewalk, yeah.
Eight years?
Yeah, so it didn't, it didn't exist then, but when we went to do the 117 sidewalk in probably, what, 2008 or 9?
It did.
It did.
It was then and that's kind of what killed the 117 sidewalk, that, the snow shelf and the ADA.
Absolutely killed the project.
And the takings and it it just became too expensive.
Right, and then.
We had actually borrowed money and and we secured a multimodal grant, which we now shifted over to Millwood to do the sidewalk there, because it was just not feasible anymore on 117.
Yeah.
Okay, Chapline, multi-use trailway.
So, Ch- Chapline is a is a project that we've come up with because, for for the very reason that we are unable to put sidewalks along 117. Because of the DOT requirements, this is our 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 alternate, we're trying to get people safely. From the high school in the area of Lawrence Farms and Chapel Court Crossing, down to our hamlet and create a a safe. Uh, pedestrian friendly, bicycle friendly, family, family friendly, uh, path.
And this is the one that I think last year I got the special legislation for a swap, was that Chapline?
Yes, yes, that's why I said, yes, that's part of this, exactly.
Yes, yes, yes. So this is that walking path that really goes sort of from Chapel Court Crossing, behind the high school, it follows, you know, a county trunk line. And, um, ends up all the way in the hamlet and so.
Connecting to our brand new sidewalks on North Greeley.
Right, so it would allow students to walk to school, it would allow our track team to be running, not on state, busy state roads. It would allow people to walk from two, you know, between two business districts, a lot of people. So it it's, and people can walk to the trains, this this is a phenomenal project.
And, um. This also can be phased?
Yes.
And. I i i if you do it in phases, I, it it is, is each phase self-contained in the sense that if you do one of the phases, then people can start using it?
Yes.
Yes, um, it just, it it wouldn't be the entire path, it would, it would end up at a a bird sanctuary parcel that we have, just behind Lawrence Farms.
Yeah, it starts here and it would go somewhere in here, would end up doing a loop if we, uh, if we split it up. So the entire project, the estimate was around 10 to 12 million dollars at the time.
Right.
Um, and that kind of ties in with the status of the TAP grant, because we've applied for a TAP grant for 5 million dollars. Obviously, the 10 to 12 million dollars is a huge cost for municipality our size, so looking for the TAP grant, we're also looking at a few other grants at the moment. Joe, what was, what was the other grant that we got for 500,000 for the design?
The Climate Smart Communities Grant, which we've already received, 500,000 dollars. So we, uh, we have five years to spend that.
So we were. We were going to split it into segments about halfway and have a loop so that it could be used as a walkway and a trail and. You turn around and then if we got the additional funding, we would be able to complete it at a at a future date.
I mean, I'd prefer to see the whole thing completed, because that's what really makes it useful. Um, if it kind of stops in the middle, it becomes less useful, at least initially, but, um. Either way, it would just be a phenomenal amenity and and really helpful for walkability, you know, trails to rails, everything else.
So you were kind enough to write us a letter in support, um, you know, for this TAP funding, but but we, um, they've sort of like gone dark on us. I I'm sure it's not just us, but it was supposed to be awarded in, um, April and then it was supposed to be awarded in May and now they're saying June and we have no idea what what the deal is. So, um, if there's, you know, any, you know, insight that your office could give or someone you could call to just find out for us where we are.
We're we'll be happy to look into it.
That'd be great.
And Joe, you did reach out to the state, but they weren't really able to give you any definitive.
Nothing.
Date when when there was going to be a decision.
Yeah, their their comment was that.
So you did speak to, so, I mean.
No, I'm sorry, I've I've got my notes in the office, um, I reached out to someone at TAP who told me that I would know before they did, which was not all that comforting to me.
Not unusual, actually.
Yeah, no, 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 I I believe them, I believe them, but I just.
No, it it's, that's the usual, um. Okay.
And and any other grant opportunities that your office, you know, we've looked at EFC, we don't see that we fit into that, we do, um. We have identified some federal funding that we may be eligible for and we, um, we would certainly seek your support of those going forward. We're we're going to talk to the town board about that in some.
Do you have any, do you have any plans with with CFA this year, to get anything under CFA company?
Sabrina, what do you, what what are your thoughts?
I don't think it's qualified.
Nothing qualified, you know, yeah, because they would, they want design plans for CFA and we just received money for the design plans, but we need to know that we have the match. To the TAP grant to match that.
So indeed, so apart from this. This subject area, are there any other things that unrelated to this kind of thing that would be under the consolidated funding application?
The, uh, the roof, Sabrina?
Not on this list, do you want to talk about?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, no, no, I I understand, but he's not asking that, so he's just asking in general.
The generators for this or what?
Yeah, we've.
Generators, we've applied for FEMA for.
Oh, FEMA, generators.
Yeah, we've already applied for those.
The roof, we had talked about, we needed a roof for the Chapel Performing Arts Center, so we want, we need a new roof for that building.
That's relief.
Yeah.
What what's the price tag on that?
Probably a few hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So we just, uh, awarded the RFP, right, or what, we didn't do an RFP, we did Watski, right, did the review.
Correct, yeah, we just hired, I think, recently and they just started doing some investigation of the roofing materials to see exactly what we're dealing with.
Where does that stand, did you guys own it? Has has the, has title been conveyed? I seem to recall that that title was supposed to be conveyed.
It it has not been yet.
To the town?
Um, honestly, we're going to look into that more, because I don't know what's holding this up at this point.
Yeah, because, you know, you can't, if you don't have title.
I I mean, the 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 lot lines have been agreed upon, the two pieces have been sold.
Right, um. Lisa, I actually think it has to do with the last item on the agenda, the Sawmill Parkway improvements by Chapel Court Crossing, right?
You need, you need to have title, otherwise.
Yeah, oh, right.
That may be tied in with that.
Yes.
So, that, again, a really good segue, Sabrina, do you want to just talk us through that?
Which one was that, sorry?
Number six.
Yeah.
So, so, again, working with Chapel Crossing, my understanding is DOT staff have reviewed the plans for the improvements that Chapel Crossing needs to make down by the Sawmill River Parkway. And they were sent up to Burnett Boulevard for approval, there's some real, um, concern, because those improvements need to be made. Now, they cannot be made when school goes back into session in the end of August, early September. And so, you know, right now, it's been in DOT's hands. It's now at like the final stages of DOT and we just want to make sure that they understand the sensitivity, because the applicant needs to mobilize now. You know, in the next couple of weeks in order to get this job done.
Because otherwise, it is such an impact to our schools.
Right, and they're just waiting for a, um, a, I don't know.
Everyone's, well. So the contract has not been let. By DOT?
No.
No, 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 but 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 DOT is doing the work.
But it's not, it's not DOT contract.
No, DOT is not doing the work.
DOT needs to.
No, 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 but are they contracting it out, have they made it out?
They need to pay for the permit.
No, DOT is not doing it, Chapel Court Crossing is doing it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I got you.
DOT is holding.
Has to approve it.
Yes, and so it is an approval, which is in administrative offices now.
Okay. If you can do me a favor, just get me this stuff on that.
It should, it should be.
You know, like the application or whatever it is. And who they've been dealing with, the DOT, and, you know.
That that permit wasn't issued.
Felix, I I thought Felix said the other night that the permit was issued, but they just haven't had a construction meeting.
The kickoff meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the kickoff.
Oh, okay, so you can just.
Maybe you do it. That's not, my understanding.
So just let, let me know what the status is and who I should push.
Was the DOT had to do final proof.
Yeah, I thought it was a final.
Uh, okay.
That, I misunderstood.
Baccarat may be a better source than than Felix, with all respect to Felix.
We'll, we'll, we'll get the DOT.
Yeah, let me know and then I'm happy to push on that sort of thing.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that that would be really helpful.
Now, that's, that's, that's a lot easier.
Schools out soon.
Because that's staff, you know, getting to the top of a pile of papers by some staffers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Versus can you give us a, you know, money?
Yeah, no, 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 we don't, we just need their approval so we can get going on it.
That's a time.
No, let me, let me do that, so, um, tell me about. New York City DEP.
Yeah.
Another three letters.
They're so close, it's so far.
The the issue is.
I had, I had a phone call yesterday.
I know you do.
From Stan Kogel.
Yes.
A very upset Stan Kogel. And, um.
Yeah.
Because he he said, we're not signing this, right? And I said, do me a favor, could you send me the, please? So, let me preface this by saying that. Stan contacted me a few months ago. And when he was. Very concerned about the timelines with DEP and it's sort of like, welcome to the DEP world. But in any event, I said, let me see what I can do. I called Dave Warren. And so Dave said, well, Chris, do you remember Newy Pick? Do you know what Newy Pick is, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, what happened is years back, under the Cuomo administration. Uh, EFC, Environmental Facilities Corp, was the fiscal agent for DEP. And it actually was pretty smooth, EFC is a good operation, um. And they handled it well. But the governance people in their infinite wisdom said, we don't want EFC working on this stuff, they got, they got other things to deal with, they're not going to help out the city. I think we know what that had to do with and had nothing to do with their workload, happened, it was political. Anyhow, New York City had to find another fiscal agent, that in itself took a couple of years. Well, this new fiscal agent is the one that is handling this project. Now, Sabrina, I think you will appreciate this, this is an agreement that requires, quote, registration. And registration, because I have to go through this with desperate sort of project. The DEP really pushes within the city to try to get it done. Before the new fiscal year, the new fiscal year of the city, which starts on July 1. So what Dave told me about the Newy Pick. The registration of the Newy Pick contract is. He he's quite optimistic that it will be approved by June 30th. After that, money will flow for engineering and suture. The way that Stan presented it to me yesterday is that this project has come to be grinding to the hole.
Well, there's a couple of different things, because I think there's the understanding that Newy Pick needs to be registered, Newy Pick.
What is Newy Pick?
New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission.
Yes.
They are the engineering consultant hired to do the design work on the wastewater treatment. My understanding is from speaking with Riverwoods, is that that Newy Pick registration isn't the issue, the issue is that.
Really?
Yeah, that that Newy Pick has actually been paid or will be paid up to 65% of the time.
I think they have been paying, but I think that for future payment, they got to register that agreement.
Okay, so.
That that, I I know they had done something, yes.
So if that is the, if that is the case, there's another issue in that. DEP has told Riverwoods that there will be cost increases based on costs going up. And that they have to go back out to bid or go to bid, they won't let Riverwoods go to bid now. To prebid and they won't let them start purchasing the things that they need, because DEP is telling them they don't have any money. When in fact, my understanding from Riverwoods is that they know there's money, there's the county three and a half million dollars.
Why don't we do this, Sabrina, I think that you and I need to to delve into it further. I want to take a look at what Stan sends me, because I asked him to email to me the agreement that he said Riverwoods would not sign. And then why don't you and I talk about it and then I can figure out my approach with Dave Warren?
Okay.
Then I have a couple of other conversations.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Chris, we we really appreciate it, because it's, you you know the tortured history of this project, it needs to get done. That wastewater treatment plant is is failing as we speak and, you know, they're doing all they can to sort of, you know, throw up, you know, send up flares for help and.
Yeah, so let let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, you could be held together with Band-Aids for some.
Oh, it's worse than that, it's.
Just like scheduled, like this norm or something. You know, and for some of this stuff, we're going to have to feed us and follow up, ways to do follow up on on each of these.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that's probably going to be best for you.
Okay.
Okay. One good topic to another.
Is this the MS4?
Yes.
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 Well, you do know that we had successfully staved them off for a little while.
Right, but the concern is the following through with the municipalities stating that off, right, because, uh, because it it's, it hasn't been promulgated yet.
No.
There's been an agreement, but there's been very little communication with the municipalities. There's been an agreement, but there's been very little communication with the municipalities.
That's probably a good thing. Because it probably means that that it now has.
Well, it's concerning because they're looking, they're looking to other entities.
Well, I think that it could be that they're they're not giving it a high priority, shall we say.
Well, and that's okay, too.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, how many years have we pushed this thing off, right?
A lot.
What was it? The the who was it that came down from D E C and with Easta Hudson? Remember the meetings that that had to be four years ago, right?
At least.
Yeah. We pushed it off then.
At least.
Now, look, ultimately, you know what they've been saying on this, is that they got sued, right? Wasn't this the one that they got sued and they lost the lawsuit?
I don't know if they.
But wasn't this the one that?
It was the environmental community.
That's right, and I think there was one of the, one of the, one of the environmental members of the environmental community was the lead plaintiff in a lawsuit against D E C. And my recollection is that they lost D E C. And so that they have to, they're trying to straddle now between having law. That that's my recollection, you know, from those Easta Hudson meetings.
Right, my, but my, so my my, this new permit came out in direct response to the environmental community.
I think it was Natural Resources Defense Council.
So it came out addressing the hilt, what the NRDC wanted.
Right. Yes, and and without any, no, and remember that, they didn't even talk to the municipalities.
And without any consideration. Right, and so 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 they didn't even talk, they still haven't talked, while it may be down here on their list, I don't want it to come back up here on the list and have.
Quickly.
Well, and but not having spoken with.
You know what I think, yeah, let me, um.
The municipalities.
This is one of these things where I'm a little reluctant to say, how's it going? Is it kind of suggested we wanna see a draft? I don't wanna see anything.
Well, this is the meeting that we had, the correct, yeah, so we're.
Correct, that's right. In which we, wasn't that with the regional? I think it was with the regional director.
Wait, was, were you on that meeting? It was with.
We had a Zoom meeting, Pete Arkum helped put it together.
It was the meeting. I was I was unable to make that. So basically, what they said was that they that they wouldn't put anything out again. Or basically that they were going to be, they were going to be transparent, that they would probably, most likely, they didn't make any promises, but it was sort of like, well, we put out a draft, we took the comments. It made it sound like their next step was to put out another draft for comments as well. It didn't, they didn't, they they were not going to just put out a final product.
Okay.
And they were looking.
No, that was clear.
And they were looking through all of the comments at the point that we had the meeting. The comments had all been due, so we had turned in ours, and um and they said they hadn't even gotten close to looking through all the comments that had been signed.
But they threw it through Brown.
Yeah.
Okay.
But but I do.
While we, it was drowned on the, and then Article seventy-eight, so.
We know.
Absolutely, literally.
Yeah, and I think was was Warren on that? I feel like.
Warren was on that, definitely.
Warren was, yeah.
And and Warren helped to to get Moa and other municipalities to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were all supervisors, we all.
We 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 upped it, yes.
But it was.
And everybody wrote letters.
It was very clear, though, that they had been inundated, and that I don't think that they, I think they knew better. It sounded like they knew better than to just then put out a finished product, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
They knew that it was gonna be World War III if they did that.
Okay, yeah.
Um.
Okay.
I have not heard further about that, this, I can check with Pete, find out if he has.
Okay, I think it's just to understand where it is.
He's. Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the um the process if they? I mean, what's the notice, you know, comment, how long does that take? If they decided to drop something, would be the.
Well, they could, they could, as Heather was mentioning, they could come out with new draft regulations, but then they're required to have a a comment period.
Well, this new draft is a.
And the comment periods, the last time around, my recollection, are they're extended multiple times.
Yeah.
But only after we.
Only after.
It was a short comment period initially.
Well, the question is, the question really was, do they have to go out with another comment period? While we want them to, and they seem to indicate that they did, we wanna make sure they do.
Now, that's a very good point.
Could they just say, we heard the comments and yours up?
Yeah, they absolutely can.
They did.
That's a good question, I'd have to find out. You know, this is just a guess from a legal standpoint, but I'd have to look into it. Is that if the nature of the redraft is so substantial, then I would think they have an obligation to have a new comment period.
But if it's not substantial.
If they say that they tweaked it, then I don't think they.
Yes, we want it to be substantial, but.
And if it, correct, if it isn't, then we say, you didn't listen to us.
Right, and we've talked about, you know, the the um the Sea Quick, the watershed municipalities have talked about bringing in Article seventy-eight if it's not substantially changed. You know, but if there's a way to salvage this before it gets to that point, I think every municipality would want an opportunity to salvage it.
It didn't seem like they were open to having more meetings to talk about the changes necessarily, it was more about the process is what it seemed to me. I don't know if you got a different feeling, that that's sort of what my feeling was, that was, it wasn't like they were gonna have sit downs with everybody, but they were basically talking about the process, but they said that they were gonna be looking through all the comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I, my sense of it, and as I say, I'll speak with Pete, but my sense of it is say, one is we will look into, and maybe put in my checklist, that we really need to look into whether or not to get another comment period. And, you know, there I I, there's gonna be something in state law or regulation that tells us how that works. And then the second thing is, should at this point we be passive in until we see something coming along, and and we'll we'll look into that, and that'll be on my list to discuss with you.
Okay.
So legislation.
Bart, do you wanna take this one?
No, I know.
I'm sure you've heard all about it.
You know, um. My recor, we got Andy gave an answer on that, didn't he? Didn't he say that it did not go through?
Uh.
He he replied on that. I had my legislative director, my, I I think that I would have known, you know, because I would have been among those legislators who would say, ah, 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 nope. Um.
He did, I just gave the floor up.
I don't, I don't think it went through. And let let me explain.
It is, it's passed both chambers and hasn't been sent to the governor.
It passed.
Wait.
The salt?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, not the salt, the salt did not.
I thought that was.
We couldn't find anything about the salt.
Seven nine one nine?
Oh, let me see what he said about the salt. Salt was different, with bronzo, that's different.
Seven nine one nine, and asks the New York State by American Salt Act to ensure all rock salt, sodium chloride used or supplied in the performance of a government contract or any subcontract here thereto within the state shall be mined or hand harvested in the United States. It has passed both chambers and has not yet been sent to the governor. He he says he doesn't, he doesn't know how it will affect the price of salt.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he has nothing about the price of salt in there.
And is that the, is that the bill that you were referring to?
Yeah.
Okay, because he said he didn't know if there were any other bills producing the price of salt that he was aware of, so. Do you know Bronson?
Chris.
Great.
You know, the problem is also, we have tax caps, and at some point, we're not gonna be able to meet that. If if the costs of of being able to maintain our town, not even to improve it, but just to maintain it, keep going up, at some point, we 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 can no longer meet those costs without breaking our tax cap, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, in a typical year, we.
The the cost of asphalt, everything.
In a typical year, we have anywhere between six and eight hundred thousand typically within a budget, and I'm just rounding it off that we can increase. But, you know, our healthcare costs overall are are five million give or take for a year, so, you know, even a three percent increase in that is is big, you know?
You know, I know.
Even a two percent increase in salaries, and and it doesn't take very long before it's eaten up by a few categories. And then, you know, you add what we're facing now with chemicals for the water treatment plant, et cetera, decreased cost for road paving, for our own fuel, for our own vehicles.
Yeah.
You know, add salt to that, it's difficult.
It's like adding salt to the wood.
So, very good.
Very good, very good. Well, on the other hand, the the shortage of.
I didn't realize it had gone that far.
All right, so you'll you'll get back to us on that.
Well, I think we have, but it's not good news.
Yeah, there's, I mean, it's waiting for the governor to call it up, basically.
She delays signing it because the state is probably out to bid for that, back in the next month, usually, the price comes out at the end of August, September, so hopefully another year.
You know. What tends to happen is that the governor will sign a whole slew of legislation. And and a lot of that is because staff has to review this stuff, because thousands of bills get enacted. And they need to have staff review and get recommendations from the agencies that are affected. And and that's the reason for, unless there's a particular, I'll give you an example where last year for the city of White Plains, they needed a tax extender. And it expired in May. And we were able to get it through, but we had to push the governor's office to say, we need it now, we need it now. Because they're, the cities are on, as you may know, they're on a different fiscal year. And and so any instance, it's like that, where you have mid-year things, but do it. Otherwise, if they're not pushed, if there isn't some compelling reason, they may well just do it at the end of the year. But, you know, we'll see when we can find out about that.
Okay.
Uh, I don't think we have any further answer on the lack of trucks. You know, because we raised this in our meeting with DOT that we had, and they're running into the same issues, you know, um, the state running into the same issues in terms of the main supply chain stuff. And it was interesting because this whole supply chain thing, it doesn't affect Newcastle's library, but I had a couple of libraries in my district where they could not finish projects that relied at least in part on money that came from the Library of Construction Fund in the state. They couldn't complete that within the time that they were supposed to complete it under that agreement with the state that provides that if you don't complete it by X day, guess what, you have to give the money back. And that problem was so severe that we that we passed special legislation statewide to extend by two years the completion dates under those contracts. So this is happening a lot, and uh, you know, I think that every municipality is in the same spot as the the state in terms of these issues, trucks.
That has never brought up to the federal level. It is not an accept.
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, Bart, you mentioned that it's the manufacturers that aren't holding anything back for municipalities at this point.
Right, we can.
I mean, if I.
Chevy Dodge, they've all closed their order bands until the next year or over here.
So the manufacturers aren't, there's no, they're not withholding anything for municipalities, they're not earmarking anything, so they're just all out on the open market, which one is increasing the price, but you can't even find them.
You know, we'll we'll explore this further and get back to you to see if we have any updates on. Um, so the next one?
Is a is a New York State local government records management grant. Just wondering if that is still on track to be promulgated in July, the awards.
What was the last word you had from anyone about it?
Acryctic email, we may have received your application.
We may have received your.
Yes. To which I, oh, I then overnighted a couple of thumb drives to ensure you got my application. Hurry, get to the postal office, it closes at five.
If you send over what you've got on that.
Yeah, sure.
And we will pursue that.
Plus, I I wanna see that email. And we can try to follow up on that.
We we'll do a little follow up.
Well, when you when you submit four applications and you get one email from one submission, it's questionable.
Yeah.
Are you waiting to hear back on others?
Um, that's the one that I that that it has the has typically.
That has died.
Well, I don't know if it has died, it typically has a response around the beginning of July. We just wanna make sure that it's actually going to come to fruition.
You know.
Couple of weeks ago. End of May, maybe.
Give you a flavor. Last year, thanks to some help from the Senate, I got three hundred thousand dollars in the state budget. I figured, okay, Sam Grant's just take two damn walk, I'm gonna get it into the state budget, because then we'll get the money this year. Now, that was for the Easta Hudson, three hundred thousand consultancy fees, you know, for doing, well, you know, sorry. Anyway, um, things take a long time.
Yes.
But we're happy to to look into it and see, and if you have any other applications that you've submitted, that you're waiting your back, let us know, and we will pursue those.
We'll send those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Agency sent you, date sent you.
Now, the Electric Landscaping Equipment Review Program, that did get passed.
Okay.
That I know, passed both chambers. Um. I I don't know whether it's been signed, but we can certainly check to see whether the governor has called it up um, and see what the story is.
Great.
Um, so let me ask you this, two things. What you've given us here, is it fair to say that in terms of Newcastle projects that are either Newcastle entirely or Newcastle on which you're hoping to get some safe funding for, do these constitute what you consider your highest priority capital projects?
Highest priority capital projects?
Mm-hmm.
No, I I wouldn't say so. I think, Bart, we are looking at some significant infrastructure, in particular, water infrastructure projects.
Now, you had sent that list over, right, Jill, a few weeks ago?
Probably.
Right, right, for water districts, sure.
For your water districts, right?
Right, to see whether or not there might be an opportunity for EFC funding, but, you know, we we're not at the design stage yet on on any of them, save for the one we're piggybacking with the with the county, where we we are replacing our aged water main alongside of the sewer trunk line that's being extended up on twenty to Wagon Road Camp. So other than that, we don't have the the plans ready that would make us grant eligible this year.
Okay, so we're undergoing a PER right now, right, as they said, started that?
Yes.
Right, yes.
So we're hoping to have that by the fall, so we can kind of have a framework going forward. We've got a water main that's gotta get across the track, whether it's over, under, or through it.
Through, yeah.
We've had a few different iterations of that project, but that's gonna be quite expensive, that's a, that's gonna be a huge priority for us. Several water main replacements that we've issued, we just issued an RFP, I think, in the last week or so.
Yeah.
And some cement re-lining of water lines, so some, those are some of our stories.
Okay, yeah, and and let's not forget the generator at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant that just imploded.
Yes.
That has become our number one priority.
As of two days ago.
Emergency rental of a generator, number one priority.
What's the generator? Is this the one that you applied for?
No, this one blew two days ago.
It's not our water treatment. Catastrophic failure.
What's the price?
It's, and that, the starting point's about a million and a half, right? That was the last time we replaced one of that size and and that was two thousand thirteen. So um that tells you where the starting point is.
People need water, so we can't be without one.
And we're spending how much to rent?
Uh, thirty three thousand dollars a month.
A month?
A month.
To rent it.
And we will have that in place, that rental in place for a year.
Yeah, but yeah, Bart, thinks the lead time is close to a year for that. If we started here.
Initial word, materials delays is the year to get a generator.
Hey, generator?
Yeah.
A lot of water.
Yeah.
Monday morning, that wasn't on our radar.
No.
Tuesday morning, it became.
Number one.
Number one, exactly.
And.
Do you have any emergency?
What does it serve? What is your water district? What is, what does it encompass?
Newcastle Stanwood Village Plaza Building is a part of water treatment.
So you get some question, you get them to kick in, I assume.
Nineteen percent, yeah.
Nineteen percent.
One nine percent?
On the capital cost, of the rental, a little bit higher, about what, twenty six, twenty seven this year?
And so you said it was Castleville, yeah.
Village Plaza, they're partners with us, ninety percent, there are some other small districts we serve. The town.
And and for that with within Newcastle. How many people does it serve?
Seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixteen, as of the current.
Wait, wait.
Thanks, the council.
You know, I. I will admit. That I didn't realize that the entire town of Newcastle is on public water.
It's not, it's not, it's not a majority, because we are about eighteen thousand four hundred people.
Oh, then why would.
There's a small, there are small sections.
Ah. The new census figure, yes, okay, so it was seventeen and change.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, but now we are eighteen and four.
Okay. So.
So after those figures come out, we have to do an analysis for the New York City D P, which is our our rates on our base per capita. So they wanna know exactly who's in there.
Is you buying a water in the city?
Yes.
And you don't wanna go over certain thresholds, so you're, you send your in a higher tier.
Yes. Yes.
We know that one.
Why do you have a three tiered rate for residential water in town?
Yeah. Okay.
But we have a couple things that are and we can talk about.
I, yeah, um. Heather.
Okay, um, we would love to um at some point have like a like a coffee meet greet or something. With um, you know, you or the town board and Chris, um, just sort of like a, not a town hall, more informal type of a meet greet type thing, just maybe. Uh, if we could schedule something like that, that would be great.
You know, with with.
For residents?
With residents.
Yes, for residents, yes.
Yeah, I mean, look, we're gonna go to community, they have our little, you know, booth and all of that, but but we'd like to do something that that's.
Oh, we're people, so.
You know, specific for this and partner with you guys on it.
So we then, once George and and. My capelitz did one here in town, you know, in the assembly room at one point.
Yeah. So I I do a a supervisor every month.
Oh.
Um, so this would be, we could kind of.
That's fine.
Find it and but make it larger and do it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, fine with that, sure.
We could do it in town hall or.
Yeah.
That'd be great, and um then also, we, Chris would love to come and address the town board at some point in time.
And this is something that we'll coordinate with Pete as well. And, you know. And and I think actually, you gave me dates or Jill, maybe, oh, you gave me dates, right, for your town board meetings.
Right, for um for June for this year and then again, you know, into July, so whatever.
And then you have what?
So we've got the the fourteenth to twenty second and the twenty eighth.
That's June. Jill, did you finalize July, Jill? I know we.
Um, I believe we're still working on the um the twelfth, which we're gonna have that presentation, the chaplain presentation with the school board. And then I think the twenty.
Twenty six.
Twenty six, yeah.
Yeah.
I think those are the dates we're gonna go with. And then we have one meeting in uh in August. I don't recall.
The ninth, yeah.
Ninth, you're still at ninth, okay.
It's the ninth, yes.
Okay.
So let us know what works for you.
Okay, great. And I'll reach out to it.
You know, probably, and I'm just kind of thinking aloud, that, you know, the um coffee with supervisor and assembly member. Maybe in person, if that works for you.
Whatever works for you works for me.
Okay, okay, that, and do you know what your calendar is yet for those? Do you have it as a regular?
I generally try the last Friday of every month, but it sometimes changes and I try to do one on a Saturday sometimes to get residents, so whichever you'd prefer.
Okay. Okay. That'd be good. Which should, and you know, obviously you wanna. Uh, I I haven't looked at the calendars to whether we have any religious holidays, the last episode. Yeah, we'll figure it out.
There are.
There are.
There are.
Yeah, so we'll figure that out. That's great.
Yeah, it's it's late.
Well, I think that we have um our to do list. And uh, and we'll be in touch with the town board throughout this process and and see what we can do and uh go to bat.
Great.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Good, now.
Sorry we gave you such a long list.
No.
And there's things that are already on it.
No, there's more.
No, listen, the honest.
There's things that are.
That's what I. Put them here.
Well, thank you all so much, we really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Commute, commute the German.
Take care, thanks.
Bye. Bye.
Take care, guys.